Roll call?
This is Detweiler.
Here.
Mr. Hooly.
Here.
Mr. McCartney.
The president.
Mr. Botoff.
Here.
Mrs. Walker.
Here. Moving on to section two of the agenda today, can I get a motion to approve the September 9th, 2024 agenda for the regular school board meeting?
Seven.
Second. Mr. Botoff.
Yes.
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Hooly.
Yes.
Mrs. Detweiler.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Section 3.01, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the August 12, 2024 regular meeting?
No, no.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Detweiler.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Botoff.
Yes.
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Hooly.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to section four, a superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Well, it was an outstanding start for the 24th, 25th school year. I can't believe we're in our fourth week of school already. On Wednesday, the 21st, August 21st, we opened our doors to 2,365 students and their families. We're up 17 more students this year than last spring. As superintendent, this is my third start opening up and being responsible for our buildings and being prepared for our students and staff, and I can confidently say that this is by far our strongest start. Last year, as you know, that we had a... Last year, we had a focus and initiative on Elevate, and let's elevate all of our work across the district. We will continue elevating the district, we will continue elevating Alder, we will be continuing to elevate our Y, which is our Jonathan Alder students, but we're going to add a focus this year, and the focus is on family. Everything that we do will... How can we best serve our families? I wanted to remind the board, last year, in the spring, we held our educational visioning, February, March, and April, we had our three different groups coming in, our staff group, our parents, and our students. We held those educational visioning sessions simultaneously throughout those several months. And then last week, we held our culminating event with SHP. Jeff Parker with SHP led and facilitated a lot of the work on Thursday. We brought all of the groups together and we put the groups through several series and learning exercises so that we could look at current buildings and decide how we want our teaching and learning to look in the future, and can we do that with current buildings and new buildings? And I also wanted to thank Mrs. Detweiler and Mrs. Hooly for your role in that work. Then later this week, on Thursday, we're going to hold our first of four community advisory team meetings. And during that meeting, I was going to give an update to the community, to this advisory team, of just some of the work of the past year. So if you go back a year ago, in the fall, we started creating the teams, and if you recall, we had the steering team, the financial team, the educational visioning team, and the community advisory team. In the fall, the steering team, consisting of board members, Bill McCartney, Steve Botoff, Mr. Ingles, our treasurer, Tyler Jester, communications, assistant superintendent Carla Quick, and myself, we were able to get in front of all of our staff before school, after school, during after boards, and we started talking about the master facility planning process and just discussing what that process looked like and what our community would be seeing and learning about over the next year. We were able to get in front of booster groups, we got in front of our PTOs, we got in front of the original Jonathan Alder Strategic Planning Committee, and we talked about that planning process. Mr. McCartney did a good job as talking about how it's important for us to have the partnership with cooperative strategies to make sure that we can constantly be monitoring our enrollment and projections over the next 10 years. And Mr. Botoff did a great job talking about the work that they did last year, that co-funded project through the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, how the decisions then, building the high school in Plain City Elementary in Canaan, and that segment one is going to positively impact our taxpayers going into segment two. And this year, with the focus for us being on family, I think it's just a perfect time because now that we're going into the community advisory, we're making decisions about what does the future of this district look like, what does the teaching and learning look like in the future, and we're doing it all around our families, I just think it couldn't be a better timing. So this team consists of over 60 community members. We're going to be presenting a facility plan to you this December. We have four meetings over the next several months. From a year and a half worth of work of educational visioning, financial committees, and the community advisory team, we'll be presenting one team or one plan to this school board in December. This plan is so important because it relates and aligns to everything that we are doing for our families and its decades of teaching and learning. So we have Josh with us this evening. He's going to do another update for the board, let us know exactly where we are. And I can open it up for questions right now, but what I'm going to ask Mrs. Walker, if you're okay with, is I would like to bring our staff member up to recognize them for excellence in action, and then I'd like to bring Mr. Rule up to recognize our students, and while our families and students are still here, have Josh do his review, and then let's open it up to the board and any community members to ask questions about next steps with master facility planning.
Sounds great.
All right, I think that I just saw Mrs. Rutherford come in, our district nurse. If you would, come on up and let me recognize you. Tia Rutherford, our district nurse. So we have our excellence in action, it's a colleague, nominates colleague, and I have several things that those that you work with sent to Tyler and I, and I'd just like to share those quickly at this time. I would like to nominate Tia for her outstanding contributions as a school nurse at Jonathan Alder. Her dedication to meeting state laws and regulations efficiently and effectively has significantly elevated our families' health and wellness. Tia ensures that every student receives the necessary medical care to fully access their education both during school hours and in extracurricular activities. Her thoroughness in creating and maintaining medical plans, coupled with her effective communication with staff to ensure they have the essential medical information, underscores her commitment to student success. Additionally, Tia's monthly health and wellness newsletters are a testament to her proactive approach, providing valuable updates and encouraging students, families, and staff members to embrace healthy daily practices. She possesses an unwavering dedication to truly enhance the overall well-being of our school community. Mrs. Rutherford consistently goes above and beyond in her role, demonstrating unwavering dedication and compassion and caring for our students and staff. Her proactive approach to the health and safety of our students has significantly elevated our schools. From the first correspondence Tia made at our school, as our school district nurse, I knew that we had something special. Tia works hard to send out monthly newsletters informing students, families, and staff of important health topics, something not required of her but appreciated by our community. Bulletin boards are not just for teachers. Tia decorates the junior high with informative yet entertaining displays to educate those in our building in fun but meaningful ways. Tia organizes and distributes medical information in ways that are easy to access while following the necessary privacy. She attends camps and even events in our district so students can be medicated and cared for safely. Without her participation, some students could not even attend some of the activities. Tia plans and organizes special trainings to ensure teachers know how to use the technologies and protocols our students need in medical emergencies. Unfortunately, I have been a part of various medical emergencies at the junior high that Tia has been there for or has rushed from another building obligations. Tia is calm, cool, and collected. She knows exactly what to do and how to manage these high-pressure situations while putting everyone at ease. Tia has even communicated with me regarding my own children, and I feel safer with them as heroes. We are so lucky to have Tia in our district. After suffering my own medical emergency, I feel at ease knowing that in the event of a relapse, Tia would be there to help me care and make important decisions. Tia Rutherford is so deserving of the excellence in action staff recognition award. Let's do a photo. Tyler's not here, but I'd like to get a picture with him and the board, and we'll post it. Thank you. Congratulations. Mr. Rule.
Okay, thank you for having me see your line with athletics. I'd like to, first of all, say congratulations to Tia. We get to see her all the time in the high school, and she does a great job and is a joy to work with, so congratulations to her. First group that we'd like to talk about tonight is our softball team. I don't think... Coach McGrew, would you go ahead and come up? Is any of the girls here?
No.
No, I know that, it's families.
I didn't see them.
Okay. So, just to talk for a minute here about softball, we have two girls that received all Ohio recognition, and both of those are currently playing college ball right now. And so as we go through this list tonight, the ones that... Everybody that's here, as far as still a student, is here tonight. The only ones we're missing are those that are away in college or playing college sports, so we were hoping maybe their families might be able to make it, and they talked about it a little bit. But anyway, I'm still going to recognize these two young ladies and talk about them just a little bit. So first one's Alyssa Miller. She's currently at Capital University. She received honorable mention in all Ohio recognition. In addition, she was first team all Central District. In addition to that, she was first team all conference. And this past year, she went 16-2 as a pitcher. She had about a 2.7 ERA, she had 136 strikeouts, and she was kind of the workhorse for the team. She ate up a large number of the innings, both her junior and senior. She threw 102 innings as a senior and 106 innings as a junior, on a team that had a lot of success and a great year. So I'd like to say congratulations to Alyssa for earning all Ohio recognition and a great year. And then in addition to that, Evan Plattfoot, Evan's currently at Ohio Dominican University. She was first team all Ohio this previous year in softball. In addition to that, she was also first team all Metro, she was first team all Central District, and also first team all Central Buckeye Conference. Looking at some of Evan's numbers and looking back, she hit .541 this year, and as I was looking at stuff, what was so interesting, her on-base percentage really wasn't that much higher than her batting average, but she rarely walked and she rarely struck out. She struck out two times the whole season. So when you look at that, she either got a hit or basically got out, but she didn't get out very much because she hit .541 for the year. So had a great year, eight doubles, one triple, one homer, and like I said before, only struck out two times the entire year. So a great accomplishment by Evan for receiving those recognitions. In addition, talking about these guys just a little bit as a team, they shared the Central Buckeye, the CBC title, they were district champions, and what's really cool about that, this was the 10th consecutive year that they've been in the district championship game. So they've either won it or been at that level. They've won it six times, they've additionally won five regional titles over that 10-year span. In the state tournament, they've had two semifinal appearances, two runner-up appearances, and they've won it one time over those same 10 years. So a remarkable accomplishment. These two young ladies were a part of that over all four years, so wanted to have them here to congratulate them. They're not able to be here, but I also wanted to invite Coach McGrew. So again, to these two young ladies and softball, I'd like to just give them a round of applause and some congratulations. Thank you. Okay, next up is our baseball guys. So same thing again, I have four of them to recognize. Three of them are away currently at college and are playing college ball, so we don't have them, but we do have one of them here. I'm going to talk a little bit about each guy and then about Ashton as we finish. So first of all, Chase Choufman this year, he's currently at Bowling Green State University. He was first team all Ohio, first team all Central District, first team all CBC. He hit .412 this season and had 10 doubles. So again, Chase had just a phenomenal year. Greg Kennedy, he's currently at Lake Erie. He was also first team all Ohio, he was also first team all Central District, first team all Metro, first team all conference, and Greg had a great year on the mound. He was nine and one, he had a 0.55 ERA, so an incredible season, had 95 strikeouts. I'm sure if you followed the tournament and the postseason run, you probably saw, but he had a... threw a perfect game in the district finals, but they won two to nothing. So a great season by Greg. In addition, Garrett Roach, he's currently at Ohio Dominican University. He was also first team all Ohio, first team all Central District, first team all CBC. Garrett hit .408 this year as a senior. In addition, they had, he had 34 RBIs, hit three homers and had six doubles. What's kind of interesting about him is he missed a pretty decent portion, two weeks plus of the season with a shoulder injury from playing first base. When he went out with the shoulder injury, he wasn't able to hit for a while or play the field. He came back and hit later in the year for him. But battling with an injury and still being able to put up those numbers is incredible. So super excited about him. And then we're here with us tonight, we have Ashton Martin. Ashton is a junior, so he'll be coming back next year. A little bit about him, this is his second year through this process, but Ashton was our league player of the year, he was first team all Metro, he was the central district player of the year, and he was the Division II state player of the year. So when I say all those things, there's obviously, if you get player of the year, you're also getting first team. So an incredible amount of accomplishments. This past season, he hit .476, he also had 34 RBIs, he had 22 stolen bases, 15 doubles, and two homers. So an incredible junior season for Ashton, to be followed up by his sophomore season. He's coming back next year, obviously, but he's also already committed to Ohio State, so look forward to that opportunity for him down the road. In addition, talking about these guys as a team, this past season, they had a team ERA of 1.10. They won their third straight CBC championship. They've currently won 34 games in a row in the league, and this past season, they had 27 wins, which tied the record for third most in school history. In addition to that, they won the district championship, so that was their ninth district championship, and lost in the regional finals, so a regional runner-up. And I know if I were to talk to all four of these young men, they would trade a lot of these accolades to be able to win that regional championship game and get into the state tournament and have those opportunities. But nevertheless, looking back, just a super awesome accomplishment. Also with us tonight is Coach Kyle. Coach Kyle was also named D2 state coach of the year last year. So like I say, congratulations to him as well. And I told him, I could get him here for a few minutes from football practice, they're watching film, and then that he could go back there. But again, thank you for him and Ashton for being here, and again, congratulations to Ashton, Garrett, Greg, and Chase on being named all-state and having an incredible season. So please give them a round of applause. Okay, next up, we have girls track and field. A little bit different here as far as talking about their tournament and the way things went. So this, our girls track and field team, the last year, they were competing at the D1 level. So it's kind of weird if you double up at the landscape of all the sports, but different sports will compete at different levels just simply due to enrollment numbers. Our girls track team had to compete at the Division I level the last two years by a small margin of only a kid or two that put them into D1. And that's incredibly tough competing at that level. So not just competing at that level is to change things, but then a kid making the state tournament is an incredible accomplishment to be able to do that. So a little bit about Avery, she graduated, but I was able to twist her arm and get her to come back and be here tonight. She had to get time away from work to do that, so I really appreciate her doing that. But again, a little bit about her, she participated in the state tournament. In order to get there, she finished fourth in the regional meet. In addition to that, she finished fourth in the district meet, and she also finished third in the CBC. Now, in talking about that, a lot of those kids that were ahead of her or placed ahead of her in the CBC and some of the others were also in the state meet and may even have been in a different division. So they were also in the same meet and advancing and getting there as well. What I would say about Avery that was really cool, or kind of a big accomplishment, I feel like as the year went on, she continued to get better and better and improve. And that being said, she actually set the school record throwing 120 feet, one inch with the disc in the regional meet. So that's kind of what advanced her to the state tournament and to have that. So pretty cool to make it to the state, but not just to do that, but to set the school record, and again, receive an academic all Ohio as well, an excellent student. And lastly, I'd like to say in this, she is our first girls Division I state tournament participant in a field event.
Woo, gases!
So pretty cool to do that as well. So again, please, I've got Coach Green here with her tonight. Coach Green is our throws coach, so please give them both a round of applause for the excellent record. A lot of them are leaving. I told them they could do this, she's going back to work, so they have to practice or whatever. Our last group to be recognized here is our boys track and field team. I've got three of the six here tonight, the other three, again, currently away at college and also running at the next level. So not here with us tonight, Luke Good, he's currently at Marshall. Brady Tremaine is at University of Southern Indiana, and then Cam Jewell is at Ashland University. So those three are not able to be here with us. We're going to talk a little bit about all of them and then obviously recognize these three as well. I want to do these in groups. Our first group I'd like to recognize is our 4x800 meter relay team. That group consisted of Brady Tremaine, Luke Good, Mason Herrmiller, and Greg Newsbaum, two of which are with us here tonight. These young men were CBC champions. In addition to that, they were district champions, regional champions, and then when they advanced to the Division II state meet, they finished fourth and got on the podium in the state meet, which is an incredible accomplishment to do that at that level. In addition to that, they set the school record in the state finals. So in that meet, they ran a 7:57.47, so that's seven minutes, 57 seconds, and 47 hundreds, which is an incredible mark and a great accomplishment. If you look at their times all year, they were really around that a lot, right, and continue to get better and better. So congrats to that 4x800 meter relay team. In addition to that, some of them also here with us now, with Ian and Greg, our 4x400 meter relay team of Luke Good, Cam Jewell, Greg Newsbaum, and Ian O'Dough. They were sixth in the state meet in the 4x400 meter relay. They also were CBC champions, district champions, they finished second in the regional, and then again, in the state meet, they were sixth. They set the school record in the regional meet, running a 3:22.73. Now, talking a little bit about that, I feel like that they did a great job in the state meet and got sixth. I feel like if you were to talk to them about it, they kind of had to tough it out and kind of gut through that state meet. A number of these guys were also running multiple events that same day. So not only were they running that 4x400 meter relay, but they ran other events and in addition to that, had prelims to run just the day prior to get to that. So again, if you're there and see it, an incredible accomplishment, and just want to say congratulations to them for that and also setting the school record. Not here with us tonight, Luke Good. Luke advanced to the state meet in the 800 meter run. Throughout the year, he was champion in the CBC, he was a district champion, he was a regional champion in that event, and then in the Division II state meet, finished fourth. And again, this is one of those things, an amazing accomplishment. In the regional finals, he set the school record with a 1:53.07, which again, is a great time, and running in the state meet and getting fourth is exceptional as well. But again, Luke ran in multiple events throughout the state meet, which is very grueling at that time of year and the heat and everything there in Waltham Stadium. So again, congrats to him. And then also Brady Tremaine, who's not here with us. Brady placed in the state meet in the six... or sorry, was a state qualifier in the state meet in the 1600 meter run. A little bit about his year in the CBC, he finished third. In the district meet, he finished first. In the regional meet, he was second, and then qualified for the state meet. He also set a school record in the CBC meet with a time of 4 minutes and 23.98. So again, just an incredible mark for Brady. And again, he's away at this point, running at the college level. And then lastly, I'd like to recognize Cam Jewell. Cam made it to the state in the 400 meter dash, he was a state qualifier. He was the district champion in the 400 meter dash. In addition, he finished second in the region, and like I said, qualified for the state, which is an incredible mark. And he set the school record in the 400 meter dash in the district finals, where he finished first with a time of 49.53. In addition to that, Cam also set the school record in the 200 this season in the CBC finals, where he ran a 2218. So with Cam, as I read these accomplishments with 400 meter dash, you don't hear CBC champion, but he didn't run in the 400 in the CBC meet because he ran in different events. So again, as I look at these young men in this season, I would say, track-wise, this was a season of records for them. As you hear all of these, the 4x8, the 4x4, the 800 meter run, the 1600 meter run, and the 400 meter dash, and the 200 meter dash, all school records. So I'm glad these three were able to be here tonight, and we were able to recognize them. They're all cross-country runners right now, so I had to twist their arm to help them from cross-country and come here to be recognized. And that's why Coach Krippe's is not with us as well, just because of cross-country practice. But again, just like I said, congratulations to these guys on an excellent season, and just give them a round of applause.
Traditionally, this is the time where people slip out, and I wanted to just invite our students and our parents who are going to stick around for 10 more minutes, but don't feel like you need to. Josh is going to give an update to the board on the master facility planning process. I wanted to open it up to any of our community members. Josh, yours.
Thanks. You guys don't mind if I move this 400 way to survey. It's, you see, okay? Great. Again, thank you for allowing us to spend a little bit of time with an update. I think the... I think the board is getting used to us coming to you when we're sort of at the end of a, you know, sort of a milestone in our process, right? So a lot of these graphics are things that you guys have seen, right? This is a build, right? So we keep sort of reminding ourselves of what our process is, what our timeline is, and then we talk about sort of where we are in that. So you've seen this graphic, I mean ultimately, facility insight assessment, educational visioning, community test fit, community advisory team, and then the final master plan to the board. We've Jim talked a bit, set the stage about the teams, right? These teams have been in place now, some of these teams have been in place for almost two years at this point. District experience team has been meeting for probably going on a year, almost 18 months. Financial advisory team is getting ready to meet. It's kind of hard for the financial advisory team to meet until we have plans for them to be able to put numbers to. Educational visioning team, as Jim mentioned, has met in the spring and then had their culminating event, and we're getting started with the community advisory team. Again, looking at the long timeline, the reason that we do this is anything that we, you know, go through this planning process today and have a desire to try and put on a ballot early next year, we're still three years away from walking into a building, right? So that's why we talk about master planning so far into the future, and why we look at enrollment projections that have for a 10-year window. We're really trying to understand what the next 10 years of the district are going to be, and we're going to share that information with your community advisory team. But when you look at all of this, you know, this planning and foundational work actually goes all the way back to probably 2019, right? That's when we really started talking as a district about what our facility views were going to be, and we've been working our way through this process. So, you know, it's a long window, right, of what we're discussing because it has such an important impact. So looking at sort of a more granular 12-month calendar, that educational visioning, most of that took place in the spring. We've met with those groups, we had a community presentation that took place in June, and we have a couple more opportunities for community presentations as we go through the community advisory team process, which you see down there in the red, all leading to us coming to the board and at your December meeting to give you a presentation on what the master plan is that's coming through your community advisory team. So I'm asking if I can be at a number of your board meetings throughout this process so that we can continually update all of you, so those that had a chance to be on educational visioning, those that have a chance to be on community advisory team, so that all five members are getting a chance to hear the same information. And just as a reminder, everything we do, every presentation that we give goes up on the elevatealder.com website. So at any point in time you see any of our presentations, you're always going to have that QR code, be able to scan that. So even the culminating event went up yesterday, I think, or maybe the day before, so all that information just from last week's meeting is already up on the site, so you can go to that and take a look at that. What I want to do tonight is just, again, as a milestone, we finished educational visioning, right? The reason that we recommend going through that process is so that we can understand how you want to deliver education and any new facility improvement we might consider. So we feel like that if we can't, if we can't fully appreciate or understand what changes in education are going to look like, and we really can't provide the facilities that are necessary in order to do that, whether that's existing facilities that have additions or renovations, or that's new facilities, and we're not making any decision on that yet, but we still have to understand what the delivery is going to be. And so you as a district are going through a concerted professional development exercise right now, right? You're still understanding what professional development is going to look like, and it's always a, you know, continuum. But what we wanted to do is sort of run your team through a series of exercises that build upon each other so that we could, again, better appreciate what that impact of the architecture might be. So Jim sort of talked about this a little bit. We had three groups of meetings that took place in the spring. And so for each one of those meetings, there was a community group, a teacher group, and a student group. And so there might have been a community group meeting in the evening, a teacher group meeting during the day, and a student group meeting the next morning, where those three teams went through the same series of exercises. And I've talked to this group before about the fact that what we love is, is that the community group, they're thinking about, wow, you know, it's four walls, and how do we do this? We've got to stay inside of that. And then the teacher group's thinking, wow, what's this look like a little bit more granularly or a little bit more across a building? And the students are like, why can't everything be round, right? Why can't we have round walls in every space? And why can't we blow these things out? So then what we like to do is we take all that back to the community group and say, hey, students, they're pretty, you know, they're pretty creative. What are you guys doing, right? Come on, let's get this going. So each one of these exercises is really meant to build upon each other so that we ultimately get to what we call the big ideas. And so tonight, what I want to present to you is really the big ideas. There's some great images. Tyler did a fantastic job documenting all this. He went through and got some fantastic images about the student groups. I think this is one of the teacher groups. Some of the, again, more teachers and more community members working together. But all these exercises are meant to be fun and engaging, right? You know, this process should be exciting. We're thinking about what the next 10 years of education looks like in the district. We're thinking about the next 50 years of facilities in the district. So, you know, we hope that all of these things are, you know, this is an exciting process. So tonight, what I'm sharing with you, the big ideas. So your team came up with four big ideas. I'm going to go through each one of these, but active learning, community of collaboration, culture of connection, and fostering wellness. One of the things I really appreciate about Jeff and his team's process is when we first started kind of doing this educational visioning stuff, they would have like two pages behind what active learning meant, right? There would be like this long diatribe of active learning means this and that, and these other things, and it could happen like this, and it could happen like this. What I really appreciate is, is that they've moved towards having just these kind of big ideas that allow you to sort of think about these things creatively, right? And so they have some descriptions about what active learning might be, right? But they're not, they're not, they're not defineders, I guess is the best way to say it. They're open to interpretation. So as you grow as a district and as education changes as a district, we can still come back to active learning and redefine it and understand what that means, right? And so I really appreciate that. You know, there were some examples that your team gave, and again, this isn't SHP's delivery of this information, these are coming straight from your folks, right? This is coming from your teacher group, coming from your student group, your community group. But these ideas of project-based learning, broadly integrated context, places to do stuff, things like Holmak Ag and FFA, using what we learn, right? That's coming from the students, right? You can hear their voices as you kind of read through these different ideas. And so again, each one of these has a series of definitions that again can grow. And what we're really trying to understand is when we take this through the next phase, which is going to the community advisory team, is, you know, this is information that we want the community advisory team to understand and appreciate so that they can appreciate what education is going to feel like or could potentially feel like in some of these new facilities or in renovated facilities or added-on facilities. Communication, excuse me, community of collaboration, flexible spaces, teacher collaborating on projects, people working together. Again, this one feels very much like something that probably came from the staff, right? There's a lot of staff input that I feel like is coming from there. Culture of connection, monitoring opportunities, excuse me, places and opportunities to be together that are not always assignment-driven, display of student work, protected unassigned breakout spaces. You know, again, really thinking about, and hearing the voice of your teams here. And fostering wellness, I know there's a lot of time spent in this category in thinking about what wellness is going to feel like in the future, right? It's a big topic right now, but ultimately, you know, I really appreciated this recess or brain breaks. I like that idea, right? That's the term, brain breaks. And again, I think, you know, I can hear the students and I can hear the staff both talking about these. So again, big ideas. And the last, what Jeff likes to do and what his team likes to do in the culminating event is they take these big ideas, and we're going to investigate master plan options. I think I've talked to you a little bit about this concept, that there may be master plan options out there that look at the possibility of maybe consolidating some of the grades out of the elementaries in order to provide more space there, or potentially bringing more, bringing classes into a new facility that may free up some areas in the buildings, right? We may look at additions to this building that might ultimately end up freeing up some space in the high school. All of those options are on the table. I'm not saying that we're going that way, I'm saying that those are options that we need to investigate. And so what I sort of charged Jeff and his team to do is take the big ideas and apply them to the existing facilities and see whether or not they will even be successful. And so the last, the last event that Jeff and his team did is again, they took each one of these four big ideas, and Jeff talked to length about the fact that all of these things kind of bleed together, right? They're all, these aren't, these different activities aren't just happening just in one space. There may be spaces where active learning and culture or community of collaboration are happening together, and that's what this graphic was supposed to represent. But so what Jeff did is he looked at your existing facilities and sort of made some ideas of where these types of spaces might take place or where these activities might take place. And then ultimately, what he asked your group to do was to grade them. You know, so how well did he do, right? And thinking about these big ideas at Monroe, and thinking about these big ideas at Plainfield Elementary, again, understanding that right now, these can't happen because there's not enough space to allow these types of flexible, you know, types of ideas to happen. So it really has to happen in conjunction with some sort of improvement that will free up space in these buildings. We looked at Canaan, obviously looked at a bunch of different areas in Canaan, and we looked at a few different areas at the junior high, and then again, obviously looked at this building and thinking about where some active spaces could occur in the high school as well. Ultimately, when we got down to it, Jeff's scores were kind of all over the map, but I'd say overall, I got about an average score of about 80%. So what that tells me is, is that it's doable, right? There's a possibility of looking at applying these different big ideas to your existing facilities as we think about their impact on the master plan. So where we're going to go with this, at the first, at the first community advisory team meeting, which is coming up this Thursday, what we always do at that meeting is it's really about sort of setting the stage and bringing everybody up to the sort of the same level of information. And so part of that's going to be not only talking about Jim and staff and discussing sort of where we are as a district, we're also bringing in folks from the village and asking them to talk about what's happening in the village as far as growth. And then additionally, I'm also going to be asking Jeff to come in virtually to give us basically a quick summary of the things that came out of educational vision, the things that the community advisory team needs to know as we set the stage for this next round. So a lot of information, but again, where we're at, we're here, we're getting into the community advisory team process, working our way towards master plan options, which are going to be bringing master plan options back to this group. If you'll remember, I keep making this motion, right? We're going to start with a lot of master plan options. We're going to work out maybe a dozen, 15 different really big ideas, and then work them down and get the sort of five best, and you're going to test those five. And so ultimately, we get to the best master plan option available, and that's what the role of the community advisory team will be in the master plan development. So this is all that information that's going to be feeding in today. So the dates, we start next, we start this Thursday. Most of those meetings will probably be from 6 o'clock, we'll probably end up going some of them until 8 o'clock. We'll try and be appreciative of everyone's time. The main thing that I've asked, and I've asked Carla this, and Jim, and everybody else involved, what's most important is the group being committed to coming to all the meetings, right? Because as we build in this first meeting, we put all this information out there, and then if all those folks aren't able to make the second meeting, then, you know, we're losing the momentum. So ultimately, whether we have 100 people in the room or we have 20 people in the room, I just want 20 committed, right? I really want folks that are excited and passionate about this as we move forward. So that at each meeting, we're going to continue to kind of drill down and get to the best master plan options so that when we present that, and again, I try to put myself in your shoes, five of you sitting there, I would like to know that when this master plan option comes to me, that there were community members behind it and that they're there to support it, because ultimately, all of these things have costs associated with them, and we need community support to make that successful. So that's where we are. I will gladly entertain any questions, and I still am going to hark on the fact that all of our information is on the website, so please go to the website if you get a chance, because all of our presentations for the last two years are probably. So that's what I have for you. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you very much, Josh.
That's how you know you did an excellent presentation, you answered every question we had. I don't think that's.
I do have, were there any surprises to you, I mean, you guys do this, you know, all of the state? I mean, were there any surprises in ours that were different or significant?
I would say that I'm happy about the fact that every one of the educational visionings is reflective of this district, right? So what I would say is, and I think Jeff would echo this, you guys are very engaged. And, you know, we are, I feel like that we are hitting you at the perfect time because you're thinking about what education is going to feel like for you for the future, and that's a perfect time for us to be working with you in master planning so that you can, you know, there's these questions about what delivery feels like, what facilities feel like, and you're asking those questions at the same time, that's sort of perfect. There are often times where we're working with districts that maybe have sort of set their course, and they're not open to being flexible, or not opening to continue to ask questions, and there's a certain rigidity there that hampers sort of the master plan process. So I think we're all sort of open to coming to the best solution, and I think it's all happening at the same time. That's what I said.
Thanks.
Thank you. I'm wondering who are the board of reps on the next?
For Thursdays, it's Mrs. Walker and Mr. McCartney, and is that it?
Who's on the financial one? Or do we not know that?
Yeah, so I have Mrs. Walker on the email. Mrs. Walker, really?
Was Bruce on it? Did Bruce on it?
No, Erica and I were on the.
No, we were.
I thought I was on because I was on the financial.
Yeah, this, our district finance committee and the financial advisory, but we can have definitely rather welcome to participate as well.
I have her.
Do I have her on the? Oh, you're on?
Yep. I thought I was.
Yeah, no, good. Excellent. All right, well, moving on, I just want to say that being on the board, you really get to, really get to hear all the ins and outs, and I'll tell you what, every single, after every single sport season, I am kind of floored by how well this district does, and I'm convinced it's, it's a lot of kids who work really hard, and a lot of parents who are really involved, and it's awesome to sit up here and see all these kids honored at so many levels. And the same thing goes for our music program. It's just really of our extracurriculars, the family involvement, the support from the community. And, I mean, I went to, what game did we go to, Steve? The baseball game?
It was the first game of the regional.
Yeah, and they did not understand who Alder is when they picked that location, because it was, I mean, we have way too many people there for the stands, and I mean, it was, we travel, I mean, we're like Ohio State, we travel. So it's really encouraging. Anyway, I just want to thank everybody. It's really cool to be a part of.
You write that down, we're like Ohio State.
We travel. That's what my husband always says, Ohio State travels.
You left out of the.
Yeah, so, okay. Moving on to section seven, I don't think we have any public comments. Carla, can you check real quick?
We do not.
We do not? Okay, great. Section eight, the treasurer's report. Can I get a motion to approve the August 2024 financial reports this week on it?
We received our last, our third real estate seller from Union County in August, as we received Franklin County, so we're all caught up on our real estate settlements. Came in a little earlier, no, came in a little earlier this year compared to last year. Last year, we got those in September. So we're still looking, still on track, still looking good there. Our state aid is looking to be down this year because we are now a sort of more wealthier district with our property evaluations and our income, which means that state's not going to be kicking as much as they were the other year. And I also want to point out that we are still in the process of consolidating our bank accounts. We just closed one yesterday, so we're down to, not yesterday, on Friday. So we're down to two operating accounts, a payroll account and a budgetary account at Richwood, and we have an HRA account still operating at Park National. When I started, we had eight accounts working through, so it's been a process, but happy to say that we're getting more efficient in our banking. So what we got?
All right, thank you. Any other, any questions? All right, we'll go.
Mrs. Detwiler.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Otak.
Yes.
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Hoolidge.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. 8.02, can I get a motion to approve the following grants and donations, which include which include fifteen, thirteen forty from Smiles to Love for sixth grade unity shirts, and an eleven dollar donation from Target to Plain City Elementary School? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to say thank you to Smiles to Love, for supporting the sixth grade class and purchasing the unity shirts. Roll call?
Mr. Hoolidge.
Yes.
Mrs. Detwiler.
Yes.
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Rotoff.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Eight point oh three, can I get a motion to approve the amended appropriations and certificate of estimated resources as presented?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Engels?
Yeah, this is just some minor adjustments, received a couple hundred more dollars from Kenny Vento grant this year, and we're also appropriating the pre-employment transition grant that Mrs. Crawl spearheaded. The grant was approved last month, but we're appropriating it by this month.
Any further questions? Roll call?
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Hoolidge.
Yes.
Mrs. Detwiler.
Yes.
Mr. Rotoff.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to section nine point oh one, the tolls report. Mr. McCartney?
Yeah, so, a couple things to highlight from the report, the fifty, fiftieth anniversary event is on October fifth, from ten AM to one PM, so if you are available, I would invite all of you to join us for that.
Is it a drop-in or a three-hour celebration?
I believe it's a drop-in.
Okay.
So, I mean, I will be there the whole time, you're more than welcome to hang out with me.
Well, okay. I just wondered, I just wondered, you know, scheduling wise, do you have three hours or do you just come in?
Maybe me, I mean, we'll see. Yeah, yeah. I, to be honest, I am not on that committee that's doing the celebrations, so, actually, I do have a, if you give me just one second, I can tell you, because I received just a little bit ago, the agenda for the dip, the cake and refreshments. Actually, how about I just forward, I'll forward you this, I'll write it, I'll forward you the agenda for the event as proposed. So I know in the past, we've talked about HVAC and electrical, and so one thing that I wanted to point out is that in September, we launched a new HVAC and electrical program. It's currently specifically tailored for adult learners, but there, I would anticipate as we have the lab renovations, or lab additions, that this will trickle down to students as well. As of September fourth, total tolls enrollment is at one thousand eighty-four students, so it's massive. And of that, a hundred and nine students are from tolls, or from Alder, sorry.
Great, thank you. Hi, section ten is personnel consent items, and I'm going to skip ahead to ten point oh five and ask for a motion to approve the employment and personnel consent items as presented. Okay, we have ten point oh one resignations, ten point oh two employment, ten point oh three non-degree substitute teachers, and ten point oh four new job description. Are there any comments or questions about any of these items?
I had a couple questions. The job description for the facilities and maintenance supervisor, is there a, it mentioned a...
I can comment while you're looking for the, for your question.
Okay, go ahead.
This job description was created back in 2016, and I've mentioned to the board on several occasions that we're trying to improve and elevate that work in the operations and maintenance department, and this is one way for me to better align the work for that person that serves in this supervisor role that fits his skill set a little bit better. So that's why we made the modifications to his job description.
Oh, section one point oh three cites the responsibility to oversee and manage comprehensive master district maintenance plan, and I just wondered what that is, or where it is passed first, or...
So I'm assuming when this was created in 2016, there was a vision to have this plan, but it is not to the scale where we would like it, so Mr. Engels and I have met with Mr. Penick on several occasions for this five-year operations plan, and it's listed out now, but we can do a better job on spelling out this comprehensive plan, and so he's working on that as we speak.
Another question I had was regarding maintenance logs on systems.
Anything and everything.
And I'm wondering if that is encompassed by any of these line items? I didn't know, I mean, I guess loosely, it could be possibly in a few of them, that that was the responsibility to keep and maintain service logs on maintenance that's done on our equipment, but I didn't know.
We definitely weren't doing a good enough job documenting in these areas, so that has, that expectation has been set with this individual, and so the modifications were to set that expectation that there'll be proper documenting with all of the records on all of the systems, so...
Okay. So that, that's just, I just wanted to make sure that it was covered in the language that's listed, I just didn't know if that was necessarily clear, that it was that specifically, but...
Throughout our meetings, it was made very clear, but if you can, if you can suggest to me better language to firm that up, I'll definitely take your recommendation.
I'll look at it.
The ten point oh three non-degree substitute teachers, is this something we would need to approve to board every year?
That's what we've been doing since COVID.
Yes.
So, I think that there is a way for us to do it one time, and then not have to approve it each year.
Do you think, I mean, is, I don't, you might not know the answer to this, but do you think the state board of education is going to withdraw this ability? I mean, to hire non-degree substitutes in the event of a sort of shortage?
I think they'll leave it as a local decision.
Okay.
And so we can decide if we want to approve it moving forward or year by year.
Which is...
I kind of, I kind of like year by year, because...
Well, it forces us to reevaluate.
Reevaluate, thank you.
But it's still available, and I think the public needs to understand that too, that there's still the option to work in our district as a non-degree substitute teacher, so I would encourage anybody who is interested, please apply.
How much is this heat a lot, do you know?
We don't, we're not using anyone right now, and it's for in case we need.
No. Most of our subs are non-degree, many of our subs are non-degree, is that what you mean? Is that what you meant?
Yeah, so most are not?
Many of our subs are non-degree. Are non-degree.
So they, they only qualify because of this exemption currently?
Correct.
But the majority are college educated, correct?
Right, non-degree meaning not teaching degree.
Right, right.
But you also don't have to have a bachelor's degree anymore either to sub, correct? Is there a differentiation between those two? Like, isn't that what... I guess I thought that's what this is, that it's anyone who doesn't have a post-secondary degree. Right. Whether it's teaching or not. Correct. It's not, the substitute degree thing isn't differentiated between those, the teaching degree, it's just any degree. So, this is for anyone that doesn't have. Anything further?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rotoff.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Hoolidge.
Yes.
Mrs. Detwiler.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to eleven point oh one, can I get a motion to approve the adult breakfast price in accordance with ODEW? It's Ohio Department of Education workforce.
Uh huh.
Okay. For twenty-four, twenty-five, as presented. Any motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, so this is just, we've already approved a dollar fifty, but we didn't realize that ODEW had a requirement that it be a dollar ninety for adult breakfast.
And Lori Robbins knew in her position, was able to find this and send this over after the approval last month.
All right, so we're just, so, so adult breakfast, students will pay a dollar fifty for breakfast, adults will pay a dollar ninety.
Correct.
Okay. Roll call?
Mr. Hoolidge.
Yes.
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Rotoff.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Detwiler.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Section twelve point oh one, can I get a motion to declare transportation impractical and offer payment in lieu of transportation for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year for the following families?
So moved.
Second.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna, I wanted to commend Mr. Engels on this, diving into this quite a bit, last year, Mr. Engels found the process that we were following was not where it needed to be, so he definitely elevated those steps and procedures, and that's why we have more of these applications, because our families are aware of the opportunity.
And then Mike, I thought, I thought when we made some change at some point, there was a, because it seems like we get it in lieu of transportation every meeting, I thought, I thought there was a cutoff for the year.
Yeah, we, by law, they can request it at any time, because we have to give a determination with the thirty days of school starting, and if it's after school started, fourteen days, and the board can approve retroactively. The state pretty much made it easier for families to request transportation, and if it's impractical, to get paid in lieu.
Okay.
And if Cana is within our district and is now eligible for, for this program.
Oh, shit.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
I see it written, I haven't, this is spoken.
Yes.
So that's why this is coming up more often, spoiler, there's going to be another one next month. We just got it today.
Yeah, they just got the whole, like, state approval.
Yeah.
Whereas before, they weren't.
Yeah, and we just got a request, so...
I mean, I don't have a problem with it, I was just curious why they were coming in when I was...
Yeah, and we also, we also made it an online form, so in the past, it was, you had to download it, send it in, and by mail, and who knows where it hit up. There was an application that was sent, but maybe not received, and so that's why Mark made this a, I guess, a submission ticket with a timestamp for record keeping.
Sure.
That's much easier for people.
So, so that's why it's coming up more often, it's just how the changes in state law, easier for parents to request.
Okay.
Roll call?
Mr. Hoolidge.
Yes.
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mrs. Detwiler.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Rotoff.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Section twelve point oh two, can I get a motion to approve the sale of the flagpole at three forty West Main Street to the Village of Plain City, or the community train depot area for the price of one dollar?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
I mean, I got two bucks.
Do you want to buy it for your yard? Do you want an outfit? All right, roll call?
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Rotoff.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Detwiler.
Yes.
Mr. Hoolidge.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Twelve point oh three, can I get a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five Head Start agreement with the Miami Valley Child Development Centers?
So moved.
Could we get a copy of that, all right, please, mine didn't have the attachment. You guys don't look after your right front? What's that? I don't look at my right front.
Is there, is this the same, same as last year?
Same as last year, Mrs. Crawl let me know that this is sixteen consecutive years with a similar partnership, but if you wanted to speak about the numbers?
Sure, I believe this has been in place since 2010, from what I can tell, looking through records. It's a way to help when they brought the program from the ESC back into district, to help support that financially, when we partner with Head Start, they provide funds to help us run the program here, for them to have students that qualify for their services as well. They help support our teachers as well as some instructional observations and training. So it's a nice way to help supplement our program, so that we don't have to up our tuition charges for our peer mentors to be able to participate in the program, it helps us financially as well as instructionally, supporting the teachers in the classroom as well. That's in both buildings.
Thank you, Mrs. Crawl. Sure. Any questions? Roll call?
Mr. Hoolidge.
Yes.
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Rotoff.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Detwiler.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, moving on to section twelve point oh four, Dr. Miller, do you want to give an intro?
We were reached by David Kell, development in Madison County, he's been doing a great job communicating with us on beginning discussions, and where the development could be leading all the way up to the possible thirty-year tip, non-school compensation agreement, and so I think after this past week, learning that we still have a lot more questions, bring in all the players from all the different parts, and let's ask as many questions as we can, and then maybe we can make a decision in October if we want. Now, I told you, Dave, you don't need to give a presentation, Mark and I forward everything that we've received from your department to the board, if you wanted maybe a one-minute overview of what you presented us, and then...
Do a quick introduction to the...
Yeah, yes, please.
Yeah, please.
Go ahead, pre yourselves.
Myron Mass, Darby County Trustee.
Chris Conley, Taff Law, outside council of the county.
Brad Holland, Sean Steen, Real Estate Group.
Steve Cuckler, Sean Steen, Real Estate.
All right, so, sent a lot of information to you guys in the past four or five days, we're looking at is a parcel tip for this, if you look at the map we sent you, the yellow parcel, essentially what's kicking off this development is Sean Steen Real Estate Group's development with six hundred multifamily units, that phase would start in fall, first days, we're looking to start in fall 2025, second phase, anticipated to begin around fall 2027, within, so their development is going to take up sixty acres in two fifty-two. So, there's going to be remaining around a hundred and ninety or so acres, that's going to be available for other development opportunities, and that's where we want to focus out on commercial, industrial type development. There is going to be an opportunity for some additional single-family, and that's capped within subarea two C of about four hundred and eighty, three B as well, four hundred and eighty single-family dwelling units, and then there's also opportunity within subarea two for the two hundred and fifty retirement community type units within that. So we're limiting the residential component of this area, focusing on commercial and industrial. And then there was a page that was SMID as well, that it was part of the overlay district that was approved in August for about eight hundred acres, and within that, you can see subarea two, and there's all the listed permitted uses within that subarea, as well as the other subareas within this overlay zoning. So, I also, the last thing I'll highlight before questions can be asked, is the map I sent out as well, laid out the primary public improvements that will be made to the site, includes a water line from essentially the border of Plain City out one sixty-one to the property, there's a... to the property, there's a sewer line that become from the city of, city of Marysville from Jerome Township, Mid-Ohio owned as well, serve the property, so it'll be a water tower that's gonna be needed on the property, as well as a lift station for future sewer needs. So, that comes out to be probably around seventeen million roughly, per Mid-Ohio's estimates, of course, there are gonna be other improvements that are gonna be made within that parcel along the corridor, we did do a parcel TIP, because this is the certainty of development that's gonna be coming at this point, and then as more opportunities come, we'll evaluate whether something like a TIP would be, would be needed moving forward. We want, didn't wanna necessarily TIP everything, we do our respect for the other entities in the county that receive revenue from these developments, so we wanted to look at things more case by, case by case basis, rather than a large district-type, type TIP, so. That's where we're at this time, I think we sent over some, some rough estimates from an annual perspective on TIP revenue. I will tell you that those, those dollar amounts are for, for an annual basis, we also received some dollars from the municipal financial advisor to Mid-Ohio, they provided some TIP revenue that actually was higher than what was provided for you guys on an annual basis. So, again, we're looking at a projection of potential development within that two hundred and fifty-two acres, and what that could bring into, into the county in that area for, and the revenue for this district.
Okay, can we talk about the TIP revenue? So, in the revenue analysis that you provided, can you, can you explain this to us, because we're having a hard time understanding, you have, in what you provided on the revenue analysis tab, it says that the yearly real estate tax revenue from the Madison County Gateway, which is this project that we're talking about currently, right?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Yep.
The commercial, commercial TIP calculations.
I don't see commercial TIP calculation.
There's a tab at the bottom of the.
All I see is, well, I see, the, the tabs that I have are student ratio, student generation, revenue analysis, and multifamily only analysis.
Yeah, I, I sent over TIP revenue. Believe. Uh, no, this is, this, I think this is usually yours.
Okay.
I can show you what I sent, sent over, take a look at this.
I have not seen this. Yeah, sure. Okay, I, well, scratch the, scratch that, how much do you anticipate that this parcel will generate in annual TIP revenue?
What's, I don't have a copy on the bottom of that page, should tell you.
There's a lot of numbers here.
At the bottom.
The total.
Yeah, total TIP revenue.
Total TIP revenue, total TIP service payments.
Thirty-three maybe?
Seventy-two million? Or.
Thirty-three million, I think.
Thirty-three here. School district portion is thirty-three point six million, and the, oh, I see, okay, thirty, okay, total, total seventy-two million, thirty-three point six, okay.
Yeah, there, there's gonna be multiple columns there, but, uh, total, which is the total TIP value multiplied by the total mileage.
Okay.
Then there's the school pieces that, that is equal to the school's millage vote for Jonathan Oliver and Coles, and then there's gonna be a net number.
Okay, and then the, the amount that would be going into the TIP fund is just shy of thirty-six million?
That sounds right, yes.
Okay, okay.
And I apologize, there's a lot of information distributed, so I.
Yeah, I apologize, this is, we, we haven't seen this document, yeah, we haven't seen this document.
And just to give you an idea there, as I mentioned, the other projection, gross TIP revenues for this one is ninety-seven million, and to the schools would be roughly around fifty million, so, again, you got, you.
Well, this is perfect.
You said the other TIP.
Yeah, so, so Mid-Ohio has also provided projections for their organization, and they provide some TIP projections for, for them to work off of, so, you look at the range, this is probably the low end, and this would be the high end, and you can look in between there.
These, these are all projected.
Projected.
And based on assumptions about how the county auditor's gonna value the various pieces, how it's going to build out, timing, but regardless, from a, from a practical standpoint, whatever that value is, is gonna be subject to the TIP, and then the school's payment is gonna be based on the school's total mileage multiplied times that assessed value.
Sure, okay, so, with that being, so let's just say, let's use the number that you provided, thirty-six million, so thirty-six million going into the TIP fund, of that thirty-six million, roughly seventeen million is gonna be used for water tower, sewer lines and water over there. What's the plan with the other nineteen million?
Well, I think that's where we look at the, you know, the infrastructure needs for wa, for, for road improvements, there will eventually need to be a sewer line that needs to come out, from when the sewer network is built out in Mid-Ohio, so there will be, there'll need to be a sewer line that needs to come out from basically the border of Plain City as well, because that, from, that line in Marysville's essentially a temporary line, that will eventually serve as a emergency backup line, which will be in agreement with Marysville to ensure that if something were to happen, there'd be still sewer services moving forward for that, for this corridor.
So, the, if I, if I, and forgive me if I'm, if I misunderstand how the process works, so the, the amount, the, what's either reimbursable to the developer, or is financeable through the developer, is governed by the TIP fund documents, is that correct?
The, the, the TIP, there'll be a development agreement.
A developer agreement.
Yes.
So, I, I have a question, and my question is, you provided a document to us, infrastructure supported by the TIP, okay? The, the top section that's in bold, I don't really have any concerns with.
Okay.
The exhibit B going down below that, in my estimation, and my understanding, a lot of these things are costs that would generally be borne by the developer, okay? So like signage, artwork, sculpture, these are things that generally you would say, I mean, any normal person would say, the developer should be paying for signs, the developer should be paying for trees, or tap fees, or turn lanes going into their development.
Or onsite infrastructure.
Or onsite infrastructure, sure. Would you guys be willing to amend this to, to be more limited in scope, because?
We, we kept it broad, but we could, we would absolutely be able to do it.
Yeah, there, there, there's two different sort of infrastructure descriptions, there's the one that you're looking at that would be attached to the TIP resolution that the commissioners would pass, and that's purpose, purposefully very broad, to encompass a number of different things that the county may want to do, now, that's not to be said, that's not to say that it can't be, that it can't be pared down to remove some of those items, like, that's something that we could certainly discuss.
Absolutely, yeah.
The, the other description is what would be attached to any sort of development agreement, that would sort of, by its very nature, be more limited, because we're talking about a finite number of things that the developer would be doing and needing, getting reimbursed for, so, just because an item was on there does not mean that, that's something that's reimbursable to the developer, but, I, I don't see any issue with, with taking some of those items out of that general description either.
And also, you know, township's gonna be part of the TIP as well, so there's gonna be things that the township's, the township's gonna need to utilize funds for that may fall within that purview potentially, if it's for parks or things of that nature, so, the primary is the water and sewer, but there are other kind of things that could be used, but absolutely, we're open, we would, we'll be open to looking at things to make you guys feel more comfortable, absolutely.
Because effectively, what I'm trying to get at in a roundabout way is, I think, at least myself and I know a number of the board members, would have no problem with true public infrastructure reimbursement, however, it's our underst, it's been suggested that in other developments, that this particular developer has been reimbursed for non-true public infrastructure costs, and so, asking this board to sign off on thirty years' worth of fine-up TIP revenue for non-true public infrastructure is not something that we would be interested in being party to.
Sure.
Okay. Is that correct?
Yeah, we can certainly have more discussions on that.
And, sorry, go ahead. Has the county considered giving service payments for other social services during the?
So, for, for the fire, we're gonna be looking at doing a new community authority, so, that's a way, and we've been engaging Chief Kay quite a bit on that.
Can you explain what that is?
It's essentially, you're, you're looking at, I would call it an assessor, or additional millage, that would affect that one property, that would be put towards, so, so it's not as though the entire township would be paying that additional millage, it would just be that, those entities within that development, that, that millage would go then to a designated entity like the Pleasant Valley Park.
It's essentially a special assessment, that is on, unlike a TIP, which is a redirection of normal private TIP revenues, it's additional on top of that.
If you go to Bridge Park, if you go out to eat at Bridge Park, you'll see an NCA item on your receipt, and that's the community authority for the Bridge Park development, and that's just this additional tax just for the people using the property.
It's pretty common in mixed-use developments, it, it's a pretty commonly-used tool to help, because, you know, the, the tips and things do, do affect fire departments, and they, they affect others, so, it's a way to sort of generate, sort of soften that level a little bit.
So, so one of my concerns is just that, I, I, you know, we're getting more and more residents move in here, and, and we really don't have some of the mental health, MRDD services and things like that to support as well, and so, it concerns me when all of a sudden, on our limited dollars that we have for mental health as it is, that we're gonna have to serve more folks. And, and our kids need those mental health services, our families need those things, and yet, we're almost kind of pushing them aside, so, is there any way to support those efforts?
We could, I don't have an answer for you at this moment, but I think that's something we can certainly explore.
Here's the other, I mean, Plain City's really in a unique position too, because we're split between two counties, our school district is split between two counties, and so we don't quite get all of the county services that maybe a Marysville or London gets, and so, you know, and yet, we're getting a lot of growth, and we have a lot more children, a lot more families, and so we're concerned about how we're gonna provide the support and services that they need as we grow.
Yeah, thank you. Very good.
Could you describe in greater detail the difference between two-family and multifamily dwelling units? Are you talking about apartment buildings here, or are you talking about condos, what are you talking about?
So, I, I think at this point in time, it's gonna be multifamily, meaning apartment buildings. There have been discussions about maybe something different, a different type of product there, but it looks like multifamily's gonna be primary, primary for Sean Steen Real Estate Group.
So when you say twelve units per gross acre, how many, so twelve units, twelve apartments in a gross acre, or twelve buildings?
Twelve buildings with some kind of numbers.
How many of those building?
That sounds like that would be, twelve units would be, yeah, it would probably one, would look like one building per acre, yeah.
That doesn't seem very dense.
To what extent is this at all coordinated with traffic needs in the area with ODOT ahead of time, because I don't know how many of you guys drive that area, at seven fifteen to seven forty-five in the morning, my guess is none of you? But it's an extreme inconvenience to the people who live in Plain City who are trying to get to thirty-three and trying to get to work, an extreme inconvenience.
Right, well, as you know, a lot of these agencies are reactive, rather than proactive, it took until, so, it took until some serious damage to some automobiles before the rail commission was able to repair that, and that was after the engineer was bugging them for months and months and months to get that done. We will, we have notified ODOT, they are aware of, of this development and all the growth in Plain City as well, so we are in constant communication with them, we're gonna, ODOT or us will require traffic studies each development that occurs to understand what the impact's going to be, but again, unfortunately, how these agencies, especially at the state level, are more reactive than proactive.
Which means the development is going to be under construction before the roads are improved?
Unfortunately, that's often the kind of case. We have, first tried to make sure that forty-two, one sixty-one, twenty-nine is all on ODOT's radar, and we're finally getting to the point where they understand that a lot of the pressures from the development, or from development within this county is going to impact these roads, you know, but a lot of the time, head for this area, for central Ohio, has been focused on, quite frankly, over in Licking County, I don't know what's going to change, you know, with all the stuff with Intel, I don't know if that's gonna change or not, but that's where a lot of the focus has been, but we've been trying to continually be that squeaky wheel, make sure they understand that development's happening here, and they need to focus on some dollars and other things out of this area as well.
So, I appreciate that it's on their radar, from my perception, the post-road thirty-three project has been on their radar for a long time, and excruciatingly long time, and it doesn't offer me any kind of comfort as a person who's been elected to serve the citizens, not just the students of this district, on their radar is not good enough for me, and I don't understand from a perspective of somebody in Madison County Development, why you would green-light development before the roads are prepared for that development.
Well, I think you look at the property owner and the opportunity for development, and the opportunity for growth, and if you're not growing, you're dying, so with this opportunity coming to this corridor, there will be opportunity to improve one sixty-one, and as which that one graphic showed you, development's coming no matter what, you do have pressure from development coming west, you have the Amtrak station, they're gunning for that, hoping to have that come to that area, and, just being honest, I think I've shown some of you the graphic, Plain City would come out this way too, no matter what, that's, that's their goal, so developments, I hate to use the phrase, development's gonna happen no matter what, the opportunity's here, we wanna make sure that the township's in favor of this opportunity, and the growth and, and, and that could come to the township, so, I would just hope that you guys in a position of making decisions on this would be sensitive to the fact that twenty-three from Delaware into Columbus is an absolute train wreck, everybody in the state of Ohio admits that, and so, basically, what you're telling me is that what we have to look forward to is, we get that not once, but twice, we get it on the one sixty-one corridor, and we get it on the twenty, on the forty-two corridor in Delaware, and we're just supposed to grin and bear it? No, I was.
Developments inevitable?
No, I think, I think what's, we're, us engaging ODOT and making sure that they are engaged, and that pursue dollars that could be used for traffic improvements, that, that we look at all options as development, or.
I'm less than confident, and I'm troubled by what appears to me a rush to put the cart before the horse, on building things before the community is ready, it's gonna impact our ability to transport our students to school, it's gonna impact our ability for parents to be with their students in the morning, because they're gonna have to leave for work earlier, and these decisions aren't in a vacuum, you know, I work across town, I know I have to leave twenty minutes earlier now, because of the post-road thirty-three double roundabout construction, and we're gonna add another roundabout Housher Road, so, these are all things that affect the citizens of our district, if you've got elementary school kids, and you've gotta be at work by eight o'clock in the morning, I know our developer doesn't care about that, but people on the board have to care about those things.
Sure. And I know you guys have faced other developments, and tips being presented for those developments, and that all impacts the greater area as well, so, it's, again, as you mentioned, the opportunity is, is here, and growth is coming.
This is, could be a very stupid question, why not just require the road to be widened in this area?
It's ODOT's decision, it's one sixty-one.
But you can still set aside, you can still set some area aside on the right, on the development area, to allow for the widening. To allow for the widening?
Correct. Oh, there's, the setbacks are 100 feet. So there's going to be area alone, 161 for widening. It's just, the engineer will tell you he wishes he had more control, but it's a state route.
So conceptually, Dave, help me understand how many lanes you can build in 100 feet? Can you build four lanes and an access road? Like give me an idea of what 100 feet buys you for a development.
I think primarily, I think the goal from talking to ODOT would be eventually being a two-lane road. Or a four-lane, I'm sorry, two on each side, yeah, long-term from the conversation we've had with them. Now, what's the timeline, what's the timeline on that? It all depends on when.
So it's interesting on the reading that I've done on 23 and on the look back on 23 and what they wish they had done. They all wish they had done space for four lanes and access roads. And so we now have the exact template for that times two. Route 42 and Route 161, and we're going to do it the exact same way.
So the status?
And am I wrong? You guys in development in Madison County, do you not have the ability? I don't want to, I don't want to hold you accountable for something you're not accountable for.
Sure.
But I mean, like, don't you green light this? I understand development's coming, I understand farmers want to sell their land, I understand we're a attractive area where people want to, want to develop. But do you not have the capacity in your role, or do the commissioners not have the capacity in their role to say, you cannot build this close to the road because we're going to need that in the future to expand these roads the way they need to be done?
And that's why we incorporated it into our overlay zoning to, for the setbacks, to allow for certain things like that.
But 100 feet, which you just told me is not enough for a four-lane and access road.
I don't believe, I don't know about the access road. But again, from.
Do you want us to jump?
Yeah, feel free, yeah, yeah. Because again, with our conversation though, that it has been two on each side.
Was it 100 feet per side?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, correct.
If I may, thanks David, Steve Cock, Schottenstein Real Estate Group. Also with us is Brad Holliday, he's our VP of Engineering and he's the smarter one of the two of us here. So a couple of things on that. So even in Madison County, regardless of the county, and then in working with ODOT, before you can get an occupancy permit to get into a facility, the county engineer, and in this case, ODOT, has to sign off on the required road improvements. It's a very extensive, it'll be a year-long, right Brad, something to that extent, traffic improvement study. They'll study the whole thing based on the projected development. Not only this is doing, but the potential commercial growth, et cetera. So then ODOT will say, okay, we need to do X lanes, we need to do X turn lanes. And then in order for you guys to get an occupancy permit, your impact will be X. So therefore you need to build X or contribute to a fund that will pay or to build that. And we will not get an occupancy permit to open up until ODOT and the county engineer in this case is satisfied with that. And if I may, Mr. Hulley brought up the 23, one of the issues of 23, I live in Delaware, unfortunately, right off 23. One of the fact, one of the issues of 23 was 30 years ago, right? It was not master planned. It was just done one parcel by one parcel by one parcel over 30 years with no comprehensive master plan or thought process. And so everybody just kicked the can, kicked the can, kicked the can, and here we are today. I think the good case in this, in this situation, right? The 161, all these corridors that you mentioned, yeah, they need to, probably been improved 10 years ago. But the reality is, is what the county's doing with the master plan, okay, this is what we know is going in here. Here's the funds generated from this growth. And here are then the improvements that will then be done. And so I think just to answer that question, if I may. Now, I will also say Schottenstein's happy to be part of Madison County. We have great relationships with all the school districts that we're in and all the communities. I think you'd be very proud of our long-term future community involvement here in Madison County and Jonathan Alder. And we look forward to working with everybody. And I think you'd be very proud of our product and very, very proud of this Madison Gateway. That's really going to open up commercial growth, economic development for this area that's ultimately good for everybody.
With regard to the first part of your statement?
Yes.
I don't mean to imply that you guys aren't compliant with state law and don't pay attention to that.
Sure.
My concern is that, has ODOT learned its lesson?
Right.
From, I don't want, I'm not interested in repeating past mistakes that were made on 23.
Sure.
What I'm questioning is, there are state minimums, right? I'm sure, as you said, be compliant, and I understand you're a developer. Every bit, every inch of land you buy is valuable and you want to build on as much of it as you can, I get that. I just want to know if there's something Madison County can do to say, great, state minimums are complied with. We think for this project, for the amount of growth, for accessibility to huge medical complex, Wexner Center, Dublin Methodist Hospital, we need more space. You guys got to move back and, you know, leave us that space. That's what I'm concerned about. But I fully understand why your perspective as a developer is built everywhere you can build in compliance with state law.
I can answer you Bruce, I think it will be important, and it has been important, that our engineering be engaging with ODOT and have that relationship. For us to dictate what can, can't be done, I haven't seen that happen yet. Doesn't mean we can't try. But if it's a state maintained route, that's going to be difficult for us to do. But we, to Steve's point, we, ODOT's going to require, and also the county engineers are going to require that traffic studies be done. And Steve went deep into what's going to be required with the, you know, what's going to be required and what comes with those traffic studies. So we're not, our goal is not to just allow every development come in and do what it wants to do. We, that's why we have our overlay district language in place. It's, I think it's over 58 or 59 pages that details exactly what's going to happen in this area if development looks to come to this area.
We're going to start construction, you said in the fall of 2025?
Ideally.
Maybe we'll be done post-road 33 by then.
Is there an end date for this? Is there an end date? It says second phase, fall '27.
Yes, that's, that's for the Schottenstein project. So then there's that balance of 190 or so acres that as development comes. We have had some calls for some interested individuals about potential. But I think what we're looking at also is for the infrastructure to be built out of water and sewer to accommodate more growth moving forward.
Who owns that 190 acres currently?
Currently Schottenstein.
And they're going to sell that to somebody else rather than develop themselves?
Correct. If they see an opportunity, they, but the discussions we've had is that it'd be sold off as, again, for commercial development moving forward.
So 60 acres is the 600 homes?
Multi, yeah, multi-family.
And that would start first phase, which is the sub-areas 1A and 2, and then the sub-areas 2C and 3B? Would that be this fall of '27?
So sub-area 2A is the roughly 60 acres on the north side of State Route 161 that's in yellow, if you're looking at the map. That would be where the 600 multifamily units would be constructed.
Okay, it's kind of the back of the north section.
Correct, yes. And that would start in 2025, 2026, that's all dependent upon when the utilities can be brought to the site.
How will those, how will those residents be accessed?
Right, while we're still determining.
It's just north of 161, so right off of there, okay.
But that's Union County, correct?
No, this is all Madison.
Oh, is it really?
The next property over, Cricket Facility, they have a little clip that's in Union County, but most of that's in Madison County as well.
So is there a projection? I guess you really have no projection if you haven't sold the rest of the tract to know what would be in and how long it would be projected out to be built and fully utilized.
Correct.
True.
We can make estimates based on what we've seen in other places, but they're, I mean, they're guesses, educated guesses.
Most likely, development after Schottenstein will probably happen. My thought is starting in 2028 at the earliest.
My apologies, so the, so the multifamily is on the north side?
Correct.
And the single family is on the south side?
Far south. And that's, that's a maximum number. That's only if the demand's there. So if, so if the demand's not there and it's more.
You're telling me Schottenstein is going to sell. Okay.
So go ahead though.
What's that?
Go ahead, what's the?
Well, I guess the, the fact that Schottenstein is going to sell land that's been slated for residential currently, and they're going to sell that for commercial development. Has that happened? That's not happened in this area, every, it has?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah? In Jonathan Alder?
Happened in the surrounding area. So the cap?
Close by, it's same market.
If you look at the cap, the cap for multifamily is going to be that 600 units, right?
Okay.
And then the cap for the single family, both in the sub-area 2C as well as the, the little, the orange, southern orange piece, that's 480 max, right?
Combined?
Combined, combined, 480 total.
So what if you?
I would, I would like to say that there is a cap of 600 units total. You cannot, you cannot build more than 600 multifamily units in the yellow area altogether. Right now, we're looking at, if we pan.
Total, in the total, total, total yellow area. Doesn't matter how you divide it up.
Actually total, for multifamily, total in the entire overlay.
We are looking at just the northern 60 acres on the north side of State Route 161 where we would go in and put a number of multifamily units in and we could.
When you say the total overlay, are you talking about 800, 900 acres?
Approximately, yeah.
No, so you put this in and there is no more multifamily going in?
There is a, so the Cricket, the Cricket folks have explored doing a mixed-use type of deal where there would be commercial on the bottom and multifamily on the top. But obviously that caters to the young professional type group, but that's going to be capped at 300, right?
Okay.
So it's 600 plus cap of 300 of that mixed use?
For the mixed-use type.
Is that the green area or the blue?
Uh, that'd be the blue area.
And what would be?
Potentially, they don't, they don't.
Correct, I mean, there's nothing set with them yet, which is why, again, we focus on parcel tip rather than the district because we, this is a certainty at this point.
When you say, when you say multifamily, if you were to do, that doesn't include mixed use?
Right, so that's what we talked about. So, so you have the multifamily, which is the 600 units. And then the mixed-use, first on the bottom, and then residential on top, that's another 300 units. That's only allowed in sub, that's only allowed in sub-area 4A.
Which is the blue.
Correct.
So in no rest of the overlay, there's any, there's no more, no mixed use allowed?
I can send you the document, you want to look at the document?
No, I'm, I trust you. I trust you.
Just clarifying because it seems unreal.
I'm surprised.
The single family is capped as well at 480, right?
So that's where, if you recall, I don't know if you were at a public meeting back in February, there was, there was a rumor out there there was going to be 3,000 residential units on this area. And this is what we're talking about, where that was simply not true. And there are caps on these different residential units because this is going to be a commercial corridor primarily and not going to be filled with homes.
So the 480 single family, is that in addition to the 600?
Correct. So the cap is, the cap, I think, I forget how I did the math, the cap's right around 1,600.
12 units maybe.
The total density over the entire 817 acres is I believe at 2, 2.1 units per acre all together. So that's, if you max out at 600 multifamily units, 480 single family, 300 mixed use and the ACLF, so.
Sorry, what's ACLF?
The county and township to make sure that that density was low.
You said 2, 2.1?
2, it's right around 2, it's 1.9, 2.1, somewhere right there.
Per acre.
Correct.
Total.
Total for the 817 acre overlay.
And again, the, 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 single family is, the demand is there. So if there's an opportunity for commercial development, that's what we prefer out in this area.
Yeah, so one thing with the, where we have on the southern portion of the yellow area where singles family is allowed use, all of the, all of the other uses within the zoning document, whether it's light industrial, flex, all of those other uses are also allowed in that area as well. So it's, it's not set in stone that single family will be there. It's not set in stone that light industrial will be there, it's whatever the market terms would be there at the time.
But to B?
We're talking max numbers?
Correct.
Based on the permitted use?
Correct.
Is approximately 2 per acre?
Correct. Yeah, it's on the back, if you look at the back of this page, it'll tell, it'll outline exactly the caps.
So on, in 2B, 2B will be all commercial. There's not allowed to be any residential or multifamily in 2B.
There's an opportunity for ACLF.
Can you, what's ACLF?
That's an adult care facility.
Yeah, so.
Residential, uh.
That's a.
Retirement.
Retirement home. But like a?
No, like.
Like a?
Like out on Perry's way. Heads for 5500.
I did have to get homes.
This doesn't necessarily mean no additional students.
What?
It just doesn't. As people in Denver, it doesn't. You assume that, that's not what it means. Dave, one of the things that would be helpful to me and maybe to other board members as well, and this might not even be a question for you. It might be a question for Jody Carney or somebody from the village, it might be something you guys could collaborate on.
Sure.
I know this is one development with one developer. I also know there've been hundreds of home sites approved at Converse Huff and 161. If you could present to us what I term a worst-case scenario of how many homes do we have coming on the 161 corridor from all the developers who have been approved?
I can get you.
That would be greatly, that would be great for us to have.
Absolutely, I can get you that number. It's approximately, I think I shared it in email, it's right around, within the village, in addition to what our number is, which I think is around 1,600, village units, right? And it could be the patio homes, the Marriott Reserve or otherwise. It's right around 3,000 within the village.
And how much are you? Are you talking about the current Rockford development and everything else there?
Right.
So 4,600 units.
We have a good grasp.
4,600, so I count 3,000, but it might be more than that. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, you're including us too, I'm sorry. You're including us too, gotcha, sorry. Gotcha, sorry, I get animated sometimes. So that's about 4,600 total, yeah.
But if you could get us that, so we know like between like what we now consider to be like not Plain City because it's outside of, or that Darby Station.
Mm-hmm, right.
It's beyond that, between there and Kyleville. I know there's been, there's been at least one development approved for multiple home sites at Converse Huff and 161. I'm not sure which side of the road it is, maybe it's both.
Okay, yeah.
But if we could have a clear picture of how many homes are coming and who the developers are, that would be helpful. Mr. Hulley, I couldn't let you know that Jody and the development team at the village have done a good job communicating with us. I think I have a pretty good grasp on those numbers, but I would like for you to send it to us so that we can at least cross-reference and make sure we're not missing anything.
Yep, I can, absolutely.
And I hope you understand why this is so important to us. I mean, we're looking, we have to do something with our school system. You just saw the presentation.
Yeah.
We've got to have pretty good numbers so that we can plan accordingly. We're not trying to pick on you, we just want to make good decisions here too.
Absolutely.
And it's critical. What's that?
You want to plan ahead.
We do.
Well, you heard him say how many years this process takes.
Yeah, correct.
And we just don't want to find ourselves in an untenable situation where we're educating more students and we don't have time to build the space for them or accommodate them. It's not fair to our teachers, it's not fair to our residents, it's not fair to our kids.
I have an idea, why don't you relocate the Schottenstein entire business structure out into Plain City? That could help with the revenue. Is that a possibility? Is that on the table?
Well, there's a, there's a, the Schottenstein family is obviously a huge name and we are one piece of that.
I, we want them all. Just, don't bring your homes and don't move here, just your business.
Just the business.
I have one more question. Back to the revenues being generated, so we've accounted for 17 million. Would it be poss, I know that it's difficult to say because obviously there's between 36 million and 90 million. million and 90 million that's going to be generated. Would it be possible to get a list of, because I struggle a little bit with, hey, we're going to, we're going to tie up the funds for the next 30 years.
Sure.
We're going to wait and see how much money's there, and then we'll just do projects to spend that down when we're taking away from other entities in the, for no, you know, I don't, I don't want to just do projects because the money's there, right?
Right.
Uh, when we're taking away from fire and the sheriff's office and MRED and roads and...
Library.
No, I, I, I still understand what you're saying, and what we always say truthfully, I, in an ideal world, these types of programs would not have to be used. So, I think if we could look at our ways, I know the township, again, and we can talk to the township a little bit more because they want, they want to explore, like, you know, maybe doing some more parks within the township as this builds out. So, you know, we can look at different uses for those funds and kind of report back what we're looking at, and kind of look at how we can structure that tip, maybe to put those into considerations. And maybe certain things roll off, you know, certain entities roll off as the tip moves forward, we can certainly structure like that.
Yeah.
Like mental health and other things.
If, if, if you're counting on 36 million, if you get to $50 million, there's no reason to not be paying Pleasant Valley to service, to service fire in the, in the, that department.
Absolutely. Yeah, it, right, and I think you bring up a great point, what we're trying to do is be a good community partner moving forward. I know, you know, development can, can, especially in a kind of like this, can sometimes be hard for some people, but we want to be good partners with it. And I think these are all good ideas to certainly consider. And I think that's why we came here today.
It's over here.
Because we have a month now to work on this and get back in front of you.
I, for one, feel better.
I do too.
About this conversation. Thank you guys for...
Yeah, we appreciate it. Sorry, I stopped this question.
No, no, I'm sorry.
You said, "In an ideal world, we wouldn't need these," but is the reason that we do need this just because if you didn't have it, the monies would not be necessarily proportioned for the things that they need there? You would have to spend them other places. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, so, this is a way to help with the, help development get out this, to this par, property. It'd be really difficult for this to happen if we weren't proposing this tip to be used.
And if, if it's not a 30, 30 or 100%, it's a 75-10?
Correct.
Which, which means the school would then receive 25% of the 33?
Uh, no, because it'd be short timeframe. Yeah, so Bill has the numbers in front of you for the, or he did at one point, that showed the 10-year, 75 projection.
I can, I can get those, I can get this.
We can get that to you.
And again, I thought...
We've written the votes, apologize.
That's okay.
The number's significantly less.
Because it's 10.
Correct.
Yeah, that's, I'm not going into the 75. Right? But it's, yeah. So, are you saying that if we don't approve the 30-year tip, that you will do the 10-75?
And you're putting minus five.
Well, our hope is that we can work with the S B partners.
Yeah.
For the 10 to 30.
So, is Schottenstein backing out if they, we don't approve the 30-year tip?
I can't speak for them.
There you go.
We're hopeful we can all work together.
That's good.
So, it benefits also the developer for this took to take place?
Uh, because the services would be brought to there so they are able to develop, yes.
I also had a question for you, I'm sorry for making your first name.
Yes, ma'am, Steve.
Um...
Yes, ma'am.
You said, "Are, we'll be happy with your product and the way it helps the school." Are you referring to the 600 apartments that will be happy with it?
Uh, yes, specific, that's what specifically we do at Schottenstein Real Estate Group is the multi-family. Uh, there's some of the additional acreage, acreage that you all were discussing that we potentially, we sell to commercial developers, we sell to maybe single-family developers. But at the end of the day, our Bailey Wick, what we specialize in is truly a high-end multi-family product. So, that's what, that's why I was specifically saying that. And there were some suggestions, you know, there's some of the emails and so forth that maybe there was something else being built there by us, but that's not the case. We, we have a very high-quality product and I think you'd be very impressed with it.
Maybe it's a stretch, but I can't imagine a world I would be impressed with 600 units on 60 acres. Sorry, it's nothing personal to you.
I'm saying, okay.
Not in my world that wouldn't be impressive. But I do wonder if there's something that the Schottenstein Realty Group is willing to do for the schools. I guess when you said that, I thought maybe, like, you were thinking there's something else that you can do to help the schools, you know, like the Amazon did the...
We're happy to talk offline.
You know, that kind of thing. Is that something that you've done with that?
We're always happy to entertain suggestions, get with your superintendent anytime, anything